We have just not a whole lot, we will bellow and I'll only introduce these guys. I want to thank everybody for being here. Introduce our friends that are with us. Alan Taylor, he's the owner of Media 3. He's where the buck stops, as Bill said earlier. That's his son Drake, who I believe is over marketing, just graduated from University of Tennessee. Good SEC school, not U of A, but they will take that. Deanna Essery, is that right? She's over the call center, she's a manager. I think you were here last time.
Yes, sir.
Been awhile. And Kristy Workman, HR Director, Human Resources. Not Ken DeBrandon Workman, I've already asked that. That's my Ken phone. Again, I want to thank you all for being here. I just wanted to say, earlier today, I gave some minutes, I kind of condensed them, gave them the alley for what we talked about in 2016, some of the questions, and I think a lot of it was just for communication. Had a pretty good meeting then, there were several issues that we addressed. He'll address these, I think, when he introduces himself. All the way from a broken boom truck to channels or different numbers, end of the line troubles, I watch the movie, but I don't get any sound. And then recently, Benita was at a council meeting and she hit on some things about temperature change causing manual adjustment problems. The original changeover didn't go well, we had lightning storm, you know, before they came up from Greenbrier and stuff was not programmed right. She addressed that pretty well, as well as a lot of the things that folks have been talking to me about, like, when am I getting the music channel back? The screen cuts the picture off, etc., etc. He'll address these. But we're grateful that you're here. And I'll just say, as the mayor of a small town, we, you're from a small town, and we look after each other, we work together, and we want things to work, and I believe it's very important that you're here and address concerns. I'm just gonna turn it over to you here in just a second, and get up, introduce yourself and your philosophy and all that, and tell people who you are. Anybody who wants to talk on your panel, on your group, can talk, and then we'll just open it up to question and answer. Very informal, just raise your hand, let's talk one at a time, and I know we know how to do that. So, I'll just turn it over to the owner of Media 3, Alan Taylor. Thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay? I figured, okay. Well, appreciate the mayor allowing me to be here tonight and having some of our staff here. We've had a lot of changes as we've been making here lately, and I know in February we had a major outage with our internet. And the reason for that outage was, was we had to change the equipment out in Greenbrier, where we feed all of Clinton and Greenbrier. And that equipment allows us to offer a lot faster speeds. We'll eventually be able to offer 1 gig of service, which I don't know, some of you that's into computers and stuff, 1 gig is pretty fast, and that's what this equipment allows us to do. It's any kind of technology, it's constantly changing, and in our business, we have to keep investing capital and to make these changes. So that's what we did. I don't know, I don't think I'm the only one here that's bought something new and hooked it up and it doesn't work exactly right. Well, that's what happened to us. We spent $400,000 on this fancy switch, it's about this big and this tall, and hooked it up, and the computer guy said, there's a problem and we can't figure it out, and we were like, well, that's not good. We're very committed here and made the cut over. So, anyway, we went through that painstaking thing, and a lot of you were affected, and I appreciate your patience for going through all that. And I'm hearing a lot of folks say it's a lot better than it's ever been, and that's what our goal is, and we're gonna make it even better. We've, across the town, we've installed fiber optic cables. We haven't hooked those cables to the lines going down the roads yet. In some places we have, but there are some places we haven't yet, so we're in the process of getting folks to hook those up. And then, that will basically break up the town into segments to where it's more reliable. One problem we had, and I'm kind of jumping around, but one problem we had was, was the internet would go out a lot because we have a feed from Greenbrier all the way to Dallas, Texas. Well, that's a long ways, and so anybody out there with a backhoe that digs a hole and they cut the fiber between here and Texas, it cut us off. So now we have a redundant circuit, we're going to Memphis and we're also going to Dallas. So now, when one gets cut, the other one reverts over to it, so that type of outage won't be happening in the future. So that was an investment we had to make. There's, music channels have been mentioned, we're working on that. I've got the guys in charge of the music channels working on those, starting, they've been dealing with, I've actually got a guy on site that's working on it, starting this tomorrow, and every how long it takes to fix it. But it was a sudden change that happened with the provider that we buy a group of our channels from. The music channel was in that, and they changed that out, and we had to make the change, and we're having to change the equipment to make it work. So that's what we're doing in that process. Let's see, some other stuff was, the channels, we're talking about the channels, were different sizes. Well, I've got some guys working on that right now as well, and that shouldn't be like that, that's something we can adjust, and we're gonna fix those issues. And that's, and then we're a handful of channels that we are aware of, and we're gonna fix those. Let's see, as far as the future, we're looking at building fiber optics into our business district of Clinton, which is gonna give us up to 10 gig of internet to business customers. That's something we're working on for this year and into next year. So basically, you know, customers, Clinton's gonna be cutting edge, they're gonna have the same kind of speed that Dallas, Texas has. So that's a big thing. It's a big deal for your chamber, your industrial board, to be able to say that, hey, our business district is a gig city, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, and we're investing the capital to do that. That's a big, big deal to us as far as going forward in our company and growing our business, is, you know, there's a big demand for that. On the residential side, we're trying to come up with a way to change the way that we deliver our video currently. The current way, the way we're delivering our video is, look at it like we were doing a water pipe. So we've got so much of the water pipe, we're sending down the video, and so much of that pipe is taking care of the internet. Well, because of the internet demand that everybody has, and to increase the speeds, we have to reduce the pipe, the part of the pipe that has the video, we have to reduce that to accommodate for more internet demand. So by doing, what we're doing is, is we're gonna change the way we deliver the video, and I'm sure you all have heard of Netflix and Hulu and all that, well, it's gonna be delivered in a simmer fashion as the way they are delivered. So it takes up less of our space in our pipe, so then we can offer a lot faster speeds to your home, which takes care of the investment we've made in February with the different switch that allows for faster speeds. So, hope I didn't confuse anybody with all that talk.
Stay away from that water now. Pay no attention, he's a casual guy.
I understand. So, that's pretty much, if y'all have got some questions, I've got people here, we can take notes and we can get ahold of you individually, that kind of thing.
My first question is, when we don't have service, and I understand you've got a problem, and probably gonna have in the future, but my question is, why do we have to pay for service that we're not getting? Just like last month, my internet was out for five days. When I went down to pay Benita, I had to pay my full bill. What's wrong with that picture there?
Well, I agree with you. If there's an outage that's, you know, not Mother Nature type thing, you know, we'll try to accommodate it, but you know, we can't, you know, it's hard to, because everybody's individual and it's separate, we don't know that everybody's out all the time. So if you come to Benita and you say, my internet was out five days, I think she's pretty accommodating and tries to give people credit, so I'm sure there's a...
She does not have the authority to reduce the bill.
Well, she does right now, okay? She can handle it. She can call Deanna and we can make that happen. If that's something that's, you're out, and you feel like you need a credit, and it's, and she can verify you were out those days, by all means, we'll take care of it.
You're a technician, you've got a good man, Bruce, he is a super nice guy.
Great, he is a good guy.
But I understand, he tries to cover three counties.
Well, that's not entirely true. He does live in Conway, we wish he lived up here, but he's got a home down there and he has family there. But he lives there and he works, but you know, we have technicians, they have an on-call schedule, and we have to have people on-call for three counties. There's times he may be, but his normal route, he's up here working on certain things.
He's a good man. He really is. He's a nice guy, and he knows his business.
That's right, I agree with you.
And I have nothing wrong with the local people, like Benita that works down here. She's always been great. But I just wish the system would, I mean, hurry up and get fixed, because it's been, what, four or five years, you know? And actually, you mentioned a minute ago that temperature change has caused us a lot of problems. When is that gonna be fixed?
Okay, we bought new amplifiers, and what it is, these amplifiers, that's probably, it's the device that makes the line work. Those components are old and we're changing them out. And because of their age, when the temperature changes, they have a thing inside them that makes it accommodate the change. Those aren't working, so we're having to change those out, and that's what we're in the process of doing. It's just a lot of them to change, and we're slowly getting to them.
I'll thank you for hearing my question.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Why don't you run fiber optical all the way into the, to the house, at least?
Well, that's a good question. Eventually, that's coming, the price of fiber optics is coming down, but it's not totally feasible to build that just yet.
But it's already there, and it's, old line is cutting your cable that is not working, it's just wore out.
Yeah, that's right, and we're having to slowly change that over, that's right.
Some of them gets theirs run all the way to the house, and then some don't. How do you...
You're talking about with fiber?
Yes.
With fiber, well, see, there's two different methods. There's one what they call a hybrid fiber coax system, and that's what this one is. And basically, you got the old coax line, and then we lay it over the top of the fiber line, alright? Then the electronics that makes that work allows for the fiber to feed that coax line that's going to your home, alright? And that, that's a whole different set of engineers that makes that work.
Okay, now, that line that goes from the, we'll say, 150 feet, 200 feet, goes from the pole to my house. It's got splices in it, they've had trouble back years ago.
Right? That has to be replaced.
Yeah, I thought so, but Bruce said it is, gonna work on it, and then they told him that it didn't have any more fiber optical.
Well, I don't know, but basically, we've got fiber running down the streets, we can't take fiber all the way to home right now. Right, right. But we, the coax line, if it becomes bad, like to your home, we can replace that coax line.
Well, I wish you would.
You got this. Okay, we got you then, okay. Alright, next.
Appreciate it. I don't need it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
My name is Sam Shannon, and first of all, I really appreciate you very much for taking the effort, making the effort to come here and bringing some of your staff here. I know that this is your business, and I am dumb as rocks, and I don't know anything about it, so I'm sure not gonna tell you how to do your business. But I appreciate having a local person like Ms. Benita here when I call. The bad part that I see as a former businessman is, your face, your business is how Ms. Benita is, how Bruce is. Both of them, in my opinion, are excellent individuals. When I have a problem, and I make a phone call, I usually end up, when I call 745-4040, I go to wherever it is, and I talk to some nice person down there, or four or five nice ladies. But to me, it's better, it would be better, in a small town, getting to just to talk to her, because she knows me, just like she knows Phillip, or 99% of the people in here. And then she could type on her computer that what the problem is. But, one other thing, and I don't know, but I know that when I was in my former business, that we did things for our community to help serve the community. And like, when the athletic department was gonna have a feed or whatever, we donated food to feed it. I'm not asking you to donate anything, but I would like to see, 'cause I don't know what the problem is, or where the problem was, but a lot of people, a lot of elderly people can't go to football games or basketball games, so they were using, they were using a local television station to watch the games that were broadcast. And that quit a couple of years ago, I guess, because they said they couldn't get, however...
Right, we lost our connection to the, we didn't wait for the head end here in Clinton and had to tie Greenbrier to be able to serve this area. You know, they got a thing called Facebook Live, and a lot of folks are going to that, and so like, your football games and all that, a lot of your athletic folks are moving to that, that kind of, what, presentation? So then you go online to our high-speed internet and you can watch it. And that's the solution to that. And as far as the community involvement, that's what Drake is gonna start doing, is making certain that we start helping the football program or the baseball, whatever.
I thank you for being here, and I think...
We're trying to plug into the community.
And I think that what you've done tonight, it doesn't matter if it's in your family or a church or whatever, it's just communicate. And if you'll communicate, most of the people up here are pretty understanding. If you'll just say, this is what our problem is, and if you'll bear with us, we'll get there. But when we don't ever hear anything, then I say, you don't care about me as a customer, and I need to go do something else. That's all I gotta say. Appreciate you.
Appreciate your business.
I eat Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Oh, shut up. I'm retired, I'm retired.
Okay, anybody else?
I just wanna say, I knocked on a few doors last, this week, and the biggest complaint I heard, a lot of them didn't think they was getting their money's worth. And the next thing, when their television goes out, they call somebody, it goes to Tennessee instead of a local number.
Yeah, well, there's not much I can do with the cost center part, it's because of economics, because we have three-state area we cover, and it just, it works better when you got the service that we have, you have to have, you have to have people in one area, just, you know, it's all we can afford on that. But we do have a local office, and you know, so, and that goes a long ways to have somebody here, luckily, but you know, if there's a, if there's a problem somebody's got, they're not satisfied when they make the call, that's what Deanna's job is, she's over the call center in Myland, and we'll be glad to address it, because you know, we're all here, and we're not perfect, but we sure wanna take care of our customers, so.
You got a good one, our buddy is really good.
Yep.
She does a good job.
Thank you.
And so is Zach, Ryan, Logan Hicks, and Seth Norris, and DL Webb and his crew who got the line across the road with Nina that day. That was very helpful for me, thank y'all.
I want to bring it up, just if you can hear. I understand you have a problem, that there's gigabytes and all this stuff, that has nothing to do with the customer. I mean, you provide it to us. But to give you an example, we were out for eight days of internet. Something was wrong, they were getting it fixed, don't know when, and I'm pretty easy going. It come on, was on for about four days, then we were down for 21 days in a row. I called Benita, tried to find out what's going on. Benita does a wonderful job, Bruce does a wonderful job. But if I call the call center, because people get their bills, and that's usually the first number they see is the 800, whatever, it gets put on a ticket. Well, that ticket may be three days before it gets back to Bruce or to Benita to be out on. So, okay, I can imagine three days before we get it fixed, but 21 days goes by. I went down to the office and got with Benita, and I said, we got a problem, we gotta get this fixed, there is, this is just ridiculous, 21 days. Now, the eight days fell on my billing cycle, my bill came in, I'd already called the call center, told them, eight days we've been out. Okay, we'll credit you that next month. Hadn't got that bill yet. Well, five days, then we're down 21, so then I call them, or I tell Benita, I said, look, you know, we're a month of free, or getting my money back. But on the 21 days we were down, it was because the highway department took down a line across 65 with the construction that was going on. Now, if I called the call center, they would say, well, we're having problems on the headline, or we're having problems in wherever. Come to find out, 20 days later, that it's because there's a line across the highway that's been down. So, I get with Benita to find out, what do we gotta do to fix this? Well, somewhere along the way, the left hand was not talking to the right hand, within your people, because they assumed they could call the sheriff's office out here and just have the sheriff's office just block 65 and just run that cable across and we'll get it fixed. I knew that wasn't gonna work, because when you start messing with Highway 65, you're gonna have to have the state involved. So, Benita got ahold of finally, our state highway department here in the county, got the number from them to Little Rock. So it was a process we went through to get this. They gave us 30 minutes to get it done, so there was a volunteer group, mayor was there, Benita was there, everybody was there, trying to help get this internet going. So I think the biggest thing that me as a customer that I have, is that when service is down, it seems like it takes forever to talk to this person, to send it to this person, that it may be a while before it gets here. Bruce does a good job, and just like you said, you know, he's, lives in Conway, wish he was here. I was talking to a guy the other day, he said, the best thing that could happen, and I know it goes back to your business, but if you had people here, if you had three people that was not just working because there's a line down, there's a problem, but people going around checking to make sure that there's things that, is it working great? You know, is there any problem? Be there, within a couple hours, you know, call Benita, hey, we've got a crew that's working the north side of town, be there in just a minute. That would, I think, make a lot more people feel better than knowing that they're putting in a request, three days later, well, Bruce is in Conway, now he's gonna be in Greenbrier, it may be five, six days. So I think that would be a big benefit to your company as far as the customers here are concerned, that we would be able to see those people here.
And when we've got a job looking here, so if anybody lives in this area that wants to learn our business, come put in the application.
I'm a drive, and I don't cross 65.
We'd love to have somebody that lives here, who lives here in Clinton on the system.
Well, let me ask you, the crew that helped put that line across, one of the gentlemen said that they was talking about putting a manager here in Clinton and wanting Greenbrier and having a crew...
Like, a detective manager, yes.
That would be going back and forth?
Right, we're working on that.
I started saying, is that what that would be?
That's like, you know, our economy's booming in America, right? There's jobs, everybody, everybody's looking for somebody to work for them, and that's the problem. There's not enough people out here, so we gotta try to find young folks that's graduating from junior technical school, whatever. And so that's what we're trying to do right now, is find folks that's, you know, this young generation coming up that wanna come to work and learn, learn, you know, internet, cable TV, so.
Well, thank you for your time.
Oh, yes, sir, thank you.
I just kinda wanna add to what he was saying about the, I appreciate the upgrades, yeah, we're having a lot of service problems, and I know you seem to be aware of that. My internet's out at my house as we speak. So, but there is a big, huge communication problem calling in, and it's not fun. And if you call in to text support, it's a minimum of 20 minutes you gotta spend on the phone. It's gotten to be so bad, you don't even wanna call. And so most time I don't, and usually in a day or a few hours it might come back on. But if I do call, they run you through, well, unplug your modem, and that's not always easy, you need to put switches on, because those plugs don't come out easy, especially if you got it up on a shelf somewhere. We do that regularly. But anyway, they'll have to go through the routine, which I understand, and of course that doesn't fix it, so they send you to the tier two. You gotta write down a big, long number, they switch you over, you're on hold, then the person answers, go, give me your number. You gotta read the number off to them. Then they start all over again. So you're on 20, 30 minutes, and then nothing gets fixed. So they say, okay, well, we'll schedule you somebody to come out. Thursday afternoon next, we got an open. We'll have you, have somebody there. Or we'll have the local office or somebody call you, and then you can hear from them. And nobody ever shows up to the panel. And, but it does get fixed eventually, because Bruce knows what the problem is, and he'll go fix it if he knows it's bad and he gets it. But we're going through all these people, they're telling us all this stuff that's all bogus, basically, and it's not really, does it make any sense?
Yeah, that's right. You wanna, yeah, you can address it.
Well, this kind of addresses your issue and along with your, are you an internet customer? Okay, it's been brought to our attention, we've had a few complaints here and there, but over the past 30 days, it's gotten worse. The call center that you're calling to is our third-party modem monitoring company. And I've gotten with their manager as well, trying to check to see what's going on, because we've had several complaints of 20, 30, 50-minute hold times. And every time they, since it's not my call center, I can't monitor their calls or their wait times. But they're telling me everything looks good, we're slow today, we're not really getting any calls. And we've also heard the complaints of them not being very helpful on their troubleshooting. Drew Cannon, the one that was here with us before, a couple of years back, we have been looking into a new company to assist us with those calls. We've even considered on keeping the calls in Myland. We honestly don't have the knowledge to do troubleshooting on tier-two standards, but we are knowledgeable enough to be able to take care of tier-one, helping you reset it and things like that, changing passwords. We are trying to come up with a long-term solution for that, but right now we don't. But I'll, I'll update Ms. Benita as soon as I find out anything on that one.
Your billing is a different company too, isn't it?
Well, we bill from our Myland call center, but we do have a third-party vendor that does.
I started saying, I call for and get Atlanta or somewhere.
Oh, that is, oh, I'm sorry, I went to billing processing. No, that's in Myland. Honestly, if you wanna talk, this will also answer some of y'all's other questions too. We do have a local number, the 4040 number...
I bet her's selling you.
Yeah.
Everybody does.
The 4040 number will go to Ms. Benita unless she's busy, she'll roll it over to go to Myland. But if y'all talk to somebody in Myland, say, I'd just rather talk to Ms. Benita, and they will email Ms. Benita, and she'll call you back as soon as she has a free moment. But if you wanna avoid the Atlanta call center, I know the prompts will tell you, press 2 for internet, press 3...
232.
Yeah, well, just honestly, if you'd rather talk to somebody in the Myland office, follow the billing prompts, because a few of them have, a few customers have told me in the past, if they don't wanna talk to Atlanta, they'd rather talk to us. Just follow the billing prompts and you'll come straight to us, or go straight to Benita.
So all we want is to communicate, we're down, tell Bruce so he can fix it. We don't need all this 30-minute stuff, and calling more than...
Yeah, it does.
But, on the other hand, I have a business account, and got the business number, they're a whole different story. You talk to them, they look up and they see, yeah, well, your street's offline, and they'll look up and see, yeah, this switch is down, and this node's down, and it's, they're working on it. Or they go, I don't see that, this of ours is down, and we don't know about your part, I'm gonna put the trouble call in right now. So that's, that's good, I mean, they do a good job.
Well, one thing too, the investment we've made on the switch, it's gonna give us the ability, we can see more what's going on in the town of Clinton through the switch, so I can see, I can see like your, like your modem, if it's online or not, I'd be able to see that now. And it also has a tool with it that tells me that there's a problem happening from your modem that's, say, 500 feet from your house, and it'll actually tell me that, so then I can be proactive with Bruce and say, 500 feet from this address, there's an issue that's starting to happen that's gonna affect the customer. So then I can fix it before you even have a problem.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
And it is nice, it opens up a whole new world, it gives them more tools, the technicians more tools to work with and find the problem quicker and better take care of a customer. And that's, that's what we're, that's our goal.
Yeah, well, I hope so. It's like I'm down at home right now and don't know when it's gonna...
Okay, you got his address? You have his address?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, alright. Do you have anything else?
Well, yeah, just one more thing, kinda add to what he was saying about getting credits, like, we added up probably three works, three weeks' worth of time we were down, our business, our business animal. It took six months to get the credit. I called, listed all the dates, they wrote it down. Two billing cycles later, I call again, they say, oh, we don't have any record of you calling and telling us that. So I tell them it all again, and then finally I got it, it was about six months. But, so I don't know.
Okay, well, hopefully, we won't have anybody else out for 21 days. That's not a normal thing for us, we know we don't, we don't like to be out for 20 days.
My wife works home, and that's, that's...
That's her livelihood, I understand.
And I said, even when you're doing upgrades, and I'm sure that's what it is, or fixing something, you know, we'll be down two, three nights in a row, it goes off about 8:30, and it'll be off all night, and kick back on about 9:00, 9:15 the next morning. So that kinda puts the working class in there, well, I didn't go to work at 8 o'clock, but is it gonna come on? And if I leave and go somewhere else, it'll be right back in line. And I don't know about everybody else, but I'm gonna say this, if you have some diehard people that like, when it works, it's great, love it. But there's so many other options out there that people, we don't want to change, we don't wanna go to another business. I don't wanna change any bells, I don't wanna change anything, that's why we've stuck it out. I know you've lost quite a few here in town because of that.
Right.
But the people that's here tonight, I'm sure, are here to help you, we want to help, what can we do to help you?
All right, yes, I'll kinda mirror what he said, I was originally television and internet, and I canceled the television when the price went up and the service got worse. And so, I'm now with DirecTV. I'm not opposed to going back to Media Three at some point, but we never seemed to get the television service we were promised when you took over. With DirecTV, Dish, I guess, everything's HD, there's a lot more channels. And to be very frank with you, I was always taught, "If you have cable, you don't have to worry about storms." Actually, when I had cable, it went out more often than it does with DirecTV.
Right.
I've only lost about one day. But I'm, I will tell you right now, I think your internet service for me as a homeowner has improved dramatically, and I'm very pleased with it. I do get frustrated, because on more than one occasion, I've been in the middle of filling out a form or doing something, and all of a sudden, it's just gone. And it's only gone for a minute or two, but I've lost everything, I gotta start all over again. Is that the, is that the temperature thing, is that what does that?
Uh, no, that, that has a lot to do with noise in the system. And whenever we get, like, it's just like at seven o'clock at night, when there's a lot of people at home and users, and so, everybody's using their internet at one time, and so, it's crazy, but like a microwave oven can actually put noise into the system that causes a problem for everybody in this particular area. So, we had to have a Bruce to go out there and say, "Okay, the noise is, the noise is coming from somewhere in this area," and so, he has to find where the problem is. It can be a connection at the, at the house, that that house is emitting the noise, or it can be a connection on the phone, so we had to fix that. So, that's the, that's the downside of not having the fiber and have it broke up, which we've got at the Floyd, we gotta, we gotta actually carry out the, breaking it up into different segments of town, so.
Mr. Taylor?
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. What can we do to get fiber here? What can we do to get broadband here? I know that Arkansas is supposed to be getting it soon, but what can we do to give the people what they deserve and what they pay for? And that's, that's kinda where I'm at, I'm on city council, but I get about four calls a week, and I was down, how many days, Benita, I've sent you more pictures than I do anybody else? It's staticky, it's off. I work, we both work, and so, we're home a short period of time, but when we come home, the TV's off, so I don't know if it's off all day long. We try to get on, I'm just right there with Mr. Domer, it's like, you fill out a paperwork, it's gone. So, it can be down. But I was down nineteen days last, last month, and I really don't think that's fair for you to get billed two months later. You know, I don't, I'm like, "You need it immediately, we need to see, we're giving you a service, and we want service back, we're giving you money for a service." So, my question is, what can we do to get fiber in here and to get broadband in here?
We've got the fiber in here, we've got to get it supplied into the system, and that's, that's gonna take, you know, of course, five to six months, because we have people working in the, you know, the areas south, they're here working their way north. So, that's, that's the answer to that question. And that's, you know, we're coming to getting it fixed.
Okay, we've been hearing this for quite some time.
I understand.
We just, really just give us a timeframe of what we can do to help you.
Okay.
You know, like, we need to write support letters to get, to work with electric companies, because I know that's where our broadband's gonna come from. You know, I'm, I'm right there with everybody else, I've wanted to, you know, turn it, you can't even turn it on, let's just get another provider.
Yeah.
So, but we wanna support our local, and Benita is doing a great job, and I know that she gets crapped out on a daily basis.
She has a, she does-
And I love Bruce, I mean, I can pick up the phone and call Bruce any time, too.
I don't need to stand up, you can view me right there. Okay, in the digital world, everything went all digital around 2014, you have to have a coax cable capable of carrying three gigahertz, check your cable in your house. If it's twenty-two-hundred megahertz or lower, it will work until you have so much data streaming in, it will overdrive that cable and it will shut it off in the line. It won't necessarily be on the system. As far as the microwave comment, microwaves are analog, microwaves are double-shielded. They do not affect, they will not affect an internet system at all, it's all digital, it's such a higher frequency, there is no chance of noise. Back in the old days, everybody had a tube TV, remember? Turn the vacuum on, picture's all screwed up, until you turn the vacuum off. That's electrical noise, travels through your house, analog picked it up, your TV would pick it up. Flat panel TV doesn't do that, because it's such a high frequency, it doesn't affect anything. One of the biggest problems we're gonna have with internet service is one, how much of the old system are you still trying to use? I have called this place numerous times. I'm gonna give you a layout of what, I live right over in the corner, everybody here knows where I live. I live right over in the corner by this bridge, okay? Your repeat box that feeds my house, I have about two-hundred feet of wire coming out of my modem into that box. It has one junction, which will drop the DB one to one and a half, noise DB. It is grounded and shielded outside at a junction to reduce electrical noise coming to the modem. And your box is grounded outside, so that I should have virtually no noise at a two-hundred-foot span. My internet has went off. Yeah, I don't think it's ever been on a solid week since I started service in April of 2016. It's never stayed on. I have a security system at my house, it logs when I lose the internet. It's never went, seven consecutive days since I've started service. I've got to the point that I just quit calling you. I have my neighbor watch my house now, because I can't rely on the system that's here. I've been told fiber optics, upgrades, junction boxes, you're talking to somebody that plays with computers, understands a lot of this jargon, you're telling everybody in this room. I used to do satellite internet, I used to do satellite television, I used to put in ground cables.
You might wanna come and work for us.
No, I have a really good job, I'm not giving up my job. I have a really good job now, and I'm keeping it. The thing is, everybody in the house, you're saying you wanna fix it on your end, first thing you do when you go home, on the side of the shielding of your cable in your house, it will tell you the frequency that's allowed. coax cable, it's into sunlight, after ten years, it's chalk, it's in the room, you can replace it. Normally, about ten years, all you get out, it's out, you know, the shield. Just look on the side of the cable, I bet a lot of you guys probably have twenty-two-hundred megahertz cable that's probably been in the last fifteen years. If you got a cable in your house, or you changed satellite service providers in the last about six years, you possibly could have three gigahertz cable in your house. It's R6 three gigahertz cable, that's peaks out at about three-point-two, something like that. But, if you wanna fix part of the problem, check that first. Place the cable, have them replace the cable all the way up to their node box, that'll reduce the noise coming into your house, it'll take the load off their system, it might work, but then again, you guys have amplifier issues getting the pipeline.
All right, so that's your question, you said-
When it goes out, it's out all over town.
You asked a question, are you still using the old stuff, and the answer is, I've answered a while ago, is, "Yes, we are, and we're changing it out."
Well, you're, you're using a system that's, that was basically analog. You are using, it's like taking an extension, you're working without an extra ground.
It is analog, that's right. But inside, we have got a digital transmission.
So, what's the timeline for the pipeline? When fiber optic cable comes in, are we gonna get it up here? Do it speed up? The speed anywhere, but why?
Yeah, we're, we're working, we've got the fiber, a lot of it already installed, but we don't have it, we don't have the nodes in place yet.
So, what is the frequency table that we allow to sell to us? Is that plugged out once we sell it?
That's what I was talking about, we put in a three-dot-one DOCSIS CMTS, that's your, all technical, I know you wanna know all that things. Okay, that, that gives you, that gives you one gig speed, but it won't be one gig to the home right now, we're trying to go for a hundred, trying to go for a hundred meg. The go is a hundred meg for the home.
We'll get about a hundred.
Okay, that's way faster than, that's way faster than ten, fifteen, whatever.
You lose about ten percent of it, depending on how much further you go out.
All right.
Sunny or Ronny Y'all?
One of the things that we were wondering is, two years ago, we were talking about getting HDTV in just a few months.
Right.
We still have HDTV, when is that coming in? If we missed that, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm working on trying to get you the HD. If, if I go with the, the different types of, the other type of delivery of video, there'll be a whole bunch of HD that's, that's coming, because my pipe's only so big that I can offer the video, so I'm trying to figure out, you know, gonna drop some analog channels, you know, like the regular plain channels like you're watching, to allow for more HD. So, I had to work with my programmers to allow me to do that kinda thing, but that's kinda one option we could do, is drop some of the, the regular channels, like a, you know, TNT, a plain SD feed for an HD feed, and we can do that. But we're, we're working on trying to figure out how to get you some channels that's an HD, and I understand, I-
But that still didn't answer our question.
Okay, well-
When are we going to get it?
They can't tell you.
You can't tell us, I mean, is it, is it in the next ninety days, is it in the next five years, is it in the next fifteen?
Let me say, I'll get it to you this year, okay? And we know, we know, we have a, a, first, we know who you are, you've been to the office, I met you last time I was here, and give me a shot at that, I'll try to make it as quick as I can, but, but say, "I'm gonna get it to you next month," I, I would, I would put my best in that.
Within the next year, but that's, that's an issue.
This, this year.
Oh, this year.
Two thousand, two thousand and nineteen.
That's right, right.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just one quick thing, okay, you must be positive and say you do these upgrades and everything's great, we get one gig? How are we gonna know about that? Like, if there's any changes, we don't know unless we call somebody and ask.
Okay, well, we're, we're gonna start communicating better. Just, just, we're gonna start doing that better.
Okay.
We, we are gonna do that. So, we're, we're working on getting that in place to communicate better, because that's the key to the whole thing, is we wanna be able to communicate with our customers.
Well, just kinda going along with that, when everybody was out for all those days in a row, Benita was the one that texted everybody. My phone came from her, "Hey, we have an outage, we know you're out." But, it was almost all of Clinton was out for, maybe we weren't all out on the same day, but we were all out for several days. And it would've been nice to get an email, a notice in the mail, or something that says, "We are aware," because you had to know that we were all out. We've got four million phone calls.
We were up, we were up all, all hours in the night trying to get it back down.
But you probably couldn't avoid it, four million phone calls, if you just emailed us all and said, "Hey, we know we're out, we're working on it, they're with us," you know, kinda thing.
But tech support, tech support doesn't know we're out, now the business side does, the other side's just going back to, going back to the communication.
But Benita, Benita knows, the people that know Benita call her, but if you do call that Myland number, you get that automated recording that's buried again, "We have an outage in Greenbrier, Arkansas." They didn't tell us anything about Clinton. Those of us know that comes from Greenbrier, Clinton, but, there are people that don't know, they're gonna go, "Oh, Greenbrier, God, God, go on him."
All right, make yourself a note on that at the end of it, Benita described the, tell the, more areas, she's talking, okay, that's fine, we'll do that, Benita, keep it up.
Yeah, we wanna feel like we're not just a stepchild, we, you know, we wanna be including that Greenbrier, Clinton.
I understand.
We're bound to choose.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna tell you a little story real quick, to set up my request. I looked out my window one day, it was about nine, ten minutes ago, and there was a crew out there in a white truck with a bucket on a boom. The only people that go up on that telephone pole, or a power pole, is the cable company. It's out there, it's the cable company, there's no logo on the side of the truck. The only really distinctive thing is, workers wore an orange hard hat, and I thought, "Well, maybe they hit shot out in the woods, okay?" I didn't think anything of it. Several hours later, I realized, not only did my internet not work, but my telephone didn't work. So, I called Arkansas Telephone. It took them two days to get me back telephone and a DSL line. Why? Because the crew that was out there disconnected the telephone line, took it across, where it crossed the street, and actually pulled the pole on the other side of the street. So, my recommendation is, put a sign on your truck, so people know who it is, even if it's one of those magnetic signs, especially if you have contractors coming in from out of state, and I know that's how you usually do it, so at least you know who the bantams are.
Right.
I mean, the next time I see an unmarked truck going up that pole, I'm gonna call the cops. So, it'd be nice to know, "Oh, well, that's Media Three, they're doing their, their work."
They, they should have a magnetic sign on this sign.
There would be no sign of that problem.
Okay.
All right. I got a question, Greg, are you, sorry you got in the car today? No, no, anybody else, this is, we've got a little bit of time, and I appreciate everybody's input and-
Can we get HBO for free for a year? I don't want HBO, that's just ridiculous.
Practically giving away our money.
Yeah, Warren, I've heard a lot here, Warren Johnson, I was a customer of Clinton Cable for years, I was your customer for three years. I've heard nothing here tonight that is any different than I heard the last three and a half years. I think you're blowing smoke, I think you have hemorrhaged so many of your customers, I don't see how you even have a business here. This is probably your customer base here tonight. I am so disappointed with your service, like he said, his internet's down, it gets out right now. And this is the way it flew. For the first year, I stayed with you, I held tight, I defended your company, I gave you a year, and here we are, three years later, it's the same story, and it's gonna be the same story. I do not see this ever changing. You know, why don't you sell this company? Oh, and besides that, it's not just Clinton, this is an island to itself, it's your entire network, it's Greenbrier, it's everywhere. Seven on your side did a piece on Greenbrier, they're experiencing the same thing we are here. When I tried to contact you through Facebook, you took your Facebook page down. Yes, it's, you, it's like you try to avoid hearing from your customers, and I'm not your customer anymore, but the last three, it was miserable being with this company. When the Hastings had the company, I had slow speed, but I had service.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, well, I guess time to tell the story, if you're, I, I don't feel like I'm blowing smoke, but you, you claim I am, and that's fine. All I can do is go out here, we're gonna do what we say we're gonna do, and then, once we prove ourselves, I hope I can have you back as a customer, and I, and I may not, may have lost you forever.
But think about it, what DL said, what the others have said, they're right on the money. When it is up and working, it is spectacular, and then, boom, I'm down.
Right.
And I don't know when it's gonna come back up. If it goes down on the weekend, oh my God, it's gone until Monday morning.